Does anyone now come to order? Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll please?
Mr. Jeff Young.
Here.
Mr. Matheson.
Here.
Mr. Cosson.
Here.
Mrs. Swanson.
Here.
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Mr. Placillo and Captain, Mrs. Tihar.
Here. Mr. Bean, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
It's to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Communications over to both schools. Well, good evening. Board of Education, Dr. Harris' leadership team, and all of our guests. Washington School is very happy to have you on this festive and chilly evening. As I think most of you know, it's my first year here at Washington, and I could not ask for a better group of students, parents, and staff. So I'd like to take this opportunity and acknowledge a few groups. First of all, our wonderful, supportive PTA, especially my executive board and co-presidents, Judas Zap and Jennifer Schimmel. They are indeed responsible for the cookies, the take-home cookies, but do so much more than that. They give so much of their time to really enhance the school experience for their children, putting in time to organize book fairs, fun fairs, and all of the fundraising. This year, they provided a birthday book for every single student, field trips for every grade level, science enrichment for every grade level, assemblies for cultural arts, and also for social-emotional learning standards, like the kindness challenge that we had in the fall. And all of the technology. Here at Washington, we're lucky to have a smart board, a projector, and a document camera in every single classroom due to the funding by PTA. And they're also helping us out with keeping up with all the bulb replacements. And most recently, have supplied sets of Kindles for our students. Most importantly, they are just supportive parents that support the work the teachers do every day. So thank you, Washington PTA. Now, on to Washington's staff. I have kind of a running joke that my problem with them is I can't get them out of the building so that we can clean. If you drive by almost any weekend, any evening, there's a light on, someone is inside working very, very hard. This year has been very busy for the elementary teachers, the new math curriculum that changed the standard of these grading. And they've embraced it all as a team and are working to do the best that we can for our students. A good example is just this morning at a staff meeting, they learned two new technology tools. Right after lunch, I was walking down the hall, stopped dead in my tracks, and had to veer into a room the teacher was already using one of those tools. So they embrace not only student learning, but staff learning. They're constantly working to get better. So if Washington's staff could please stand and be recognized. Now, this year, we've been talking a lot about math and thinking a lot about math. We've had a lot of numbers going around in our heads. So I thought I would give you just a few Washington-by-the-numbers. The first one is really easy. 418. That is our enrollment. Those are my 418 new little friends I've made this year. The next one is 17. That's 17 languages spoken here by the students at Washington. 1,000. It's a $1,000 grant that two of our ELL teachers were recently awarded, Cheryl Berth and Camila Lopez. And they're using that to supply the students with school supplies to take home in order to get their homework done. 24 veterans joined us this year during Veterans Day celebrations. 250. Washington has a big heart. 250 bags of food to the stuff-a-truck. And 9,566. What could that be? That's the number of YouTube views of our fifth-grade fractions video. Now, you're about to see a clip. I am purposely not going to show you the whole thing because I want you all to go home and watch it individually. Takes 10,000 views to be viral, and we're oh, so close. So that brings us to technology. That's the main focus of my presentation. When I was in the classroom 10 years ago, we really worked to help students learn to use technology for research and presentation. But now, we have a much bigger charge. Our students are digital natives. I'm sure we all know two- and three-year-old children can work an iPad or a smartphone much better than we can. This is how they're learning. It's changing the way they're learning. And so many of us, we are not digital natives. We are working to really integrate it into every day, all that components of learning. So what we decided to do to just give you a broad overview is my library director, J.J. Bann, volunteered to video what's going on there. And like Washington's way, everybody stepped up. And so many teachers that welcomed J.J. into video in their room that it's going to move pretty fast. And know that a lot of this was just in a few days. And a lot of what you see happens daily. So we hope you enjoy our video.
Can you start so that they can reinforce the reading activities that we're doing? Whether it's working on nouns, phonemes, other grammar activities. We also have sites that touch on math skills and nonfiction books and so forth. It's not unentired. You are right. It's not unentired. How do you figure it out? With a reading or a code? One, two, three. But that's a lot. Really great. Okay, let's go back. Oh, you gotta be up to...
All right. Awesome. I like to use a smart board because it's usable on a laptop.
How many fish do I want to eat here?
No.
We have a lot of fish.
No.
The problem, I can do this, that then divided by two is equal to three with an over-reach of one.
I can reach the other. I can link a YouTube video. I can attach a file. My goal is to make classes. I definitely encourage the children to want to do something like that.
Three taps, good. Okay, no, it's not three. It's the second one. These are, this is 400s. This is 40,000s. 400, 10,000s. We didn't just make the fractions video to just make a super cool video. The whole point of technology in a classroom isn't just to use it, but to use it effectively for instruction. So the whole point of the video wasn't just to do something just out there, but to actually instruct students on fractions and to encourage them to learn in a musical manner.
Fractions, fractions. Fractions are probably need to know.
I think coming to class meant to really help both of my third graders because they get practice to reflect with their own pace. And they really like to deal with the students' needs. They get to write the wrong. And of course, Link Daving has always liked you.
We use iPads in second grade every day. Also, we use it for the apps that we have. And this is a way that we can differentiate with how long you're going to have with your math. We need to...
All right. Well, we have the orders to choose from the monsters. They get up there, they figure out the math.
We have the apps that provide different opportunities for kids.
Today, I'd like to talk a little bit about Reader's Workshop. Reader's Workshop is a way to get children invested in their reading. The reason that I did this video was to help teachers learn to use Reader's Workshop and broaden an idea of how to get started. The other reason I did it was to have parents able to work in a classroom.
In the second grade, we really enjoyed using the program to enhance a lot of our social studies and science units. It really takes what would be in a test book and takes it to a new level and brings it to life. There are options to have access by the lab. So it differentiates for students that are at different reading levels.
In the fifth grade, page reading class, we can utilize a presi to create character development.
So this is my presi. And we are getting here.
We use this website instead of the normal pencil method in order to have students' spatial creativity and show a connection to the novel characters.
This is Mark Presi we did for page reading for Washington.
This is my Westin Jane President for page reading.
This is my Megan. And Paige. We use the workshop slot. And one of the awesome things we get to is making presis and get to walk through the line. And then just the writing comes down in a piece of notebook because we get to let your creativity flow.
The water cycle project helped me understand what the water cycle means. I get one reading this project.
The sun runs the water cycle. Water goes into the air and moves clouds.
We're doing the report on weather. So the others are helping them with their title pages. And then you're trying to go to the microphone.
Our children are using technology to do their cover page where they are actually choosing a font, finding words, writing their title, writing their name, changing fonts, finding pictures, importing them, and then putting them on a cover for their five paragraph expository essay.
And Ransley. And I see I'm on the page to board for all the hours every month of our time and everything you do to support the work we do here with our children. Thank you. Okay, recognitions and achievements, Dr. Harris. Oh, sorry. Do there any modifications that you have any board members wish to make? Okay, then, recognitions and achievements.
Thank you, Mrs. Tihar. And this evening, we have a special recognition of not one of our own staff members, but a very important staff person who works at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ramrich this time and let him tell a little bit of the story about Officer Hassan from the Wheaton Police Department. Dr. Ramrich.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Harris. A little friend. The prime objective of any school district is to provide a safe and orderly environment where children are given teachers to teach. Without that environment, that learning opportunity can corrode and provide some serious consequences. If that safe haven is available for our children, learning doesn't take place and teaching is more difficult. However, the schools of District 200 are safe and are orderly. No question about it. There are a number of reasons why they are. Certainly, one of the reasons are our parents, who are conscientious and send this great children to work with every day. They're supportive. They have great values. And they have high expectations for their young people, and they have high expectations for us. Another reason certainly are the staff and teachers and administrators who need our children. They spend time every day being concerned about our children, their safety, both emotionally and physically and intellectually. Their conscientious efforts make a difference at our school, too. But another essential factor in that safe and orderly environment that contributes to those schools is the school liaison program near District 200. The liaison program provides an officer from the Wheaton Police Department at both our schools. Those officers serve as not only the high schools, but our middle schools and, when necessary, provide help for our elementary schools. Now, it's always difficult to quantify the success of a liaison program or the impact it has on that quality of life of our students. It's hard to count how many times students don't make bad choices because it's an officer. You can't count on a chart or have numbers about how many times a student, or in some cases, an adult, makes a good decision instead of a bad decision because it's an officer not involved, an officer having to be in the cafeteria on that day. But what we do know is that when the schools are safe and staff and children feel comfortable, they're more apt to come and report situations that provide anxious time for them. When they know their environment is orderly and they feel comfortable, when they see things that aren't right, tell somebody about it because they know that's not okay in their school and that's not a good behavior. And we've seen that time to time again in all our schools. Children recording situations with adults and liaison officers that are preventing serious situations both in our school and in our community. Now, the quality of any police liaison program is directly related to the quality of the officers that are assigned to our school. And in District 200, at this time, we have two of the best officers I've ever seen in all the years I've been working with liaison programs. I've been doing this for over 25 years of writing in districts, and we have two of the best. Chris Camarino is a liaison officer at Wheaton Warrenville and does outstanding job in that school and that community and he's in the face. But the same thing we're here and I'm going to talk about Officer Ed Hassan, who is a liaison officer at Wheaton Warrenville South. Last month, he was named the Outstanding Human Officer in the state college by the Human Officers Association for Independence. That's a pretty high honor and a pretty prestigious recognition because it's one that's presented by his peers. And if you know human officers, they're not watching to give high praise if it's not deserved. Officer Hassan has been with Wheaton Warrenville South for, this is his fourth year now as an officer. Let me read for you some of the qualities that were in the nomination that brought him this award last month. Officer Hassan has helped coordinate information between and among various agencies. He helps monitor and support students and service them. He's concerned about the cause and prevention of crime and works tirelessly. He helps students make good choices rather than before they say anything. He was instrumental in helping to organize the COMPASS program, which is a joint diversion program between District 200 and the human justice system that provides interventions for young people who refer to those to that program. It provides topics like learning of previous social skills that got from all the drug treatment opportunities, substance abuse education, management skills, and victim impact. This program is designed to redirect students for serious consequences after you've done the intervention. The school liaison program is primarily a preventative program. It's not a program to catch kids who are bad. It's to help them make good choices and provide resources for them at our school. Officer Hassan certainly fits that and is a perfect model for that preventative component in our schools. He helps students, parents, and staff with questions and solve problems. And if necessary, he's there to provide a police presence and take swift and appropriate action to win that call. He's approachable, has a great smile, tells the most positive. As a matter of fact, this past year, on the first day of school, a new student, the school came up and asked if he was a real police officer. It's a little hard to imagine, but that's kind of approachability that people have to come forward and talk to. He's respected. By every way he's encountered, his positive attitude, his great smile, making a great presence. And we are absolutely delighted to have him working in our school. He's a credit to the department and to Wheaton Warrenville South and our community. He's the kind of officers that are a major difference in our community. It's an honor to meet Detective Officer Ed Hassan, the human officer here in the state college.
That's very nice. Very nice. And then don't forget anything after what you've said and those favorite questions. When I was selected for this position, I had the great opportunity to talk to Dr. Ramrich and my supervisor to kind of understand the direction of what this position was going into. I tried to stick to that and use that as the alibi of everything I do every day. Little that I know, thanks to people like Mr. Lucky, Mr. Nigrosol, Mrs. Lucky, a lot of the staff at Wheaton South, a lot of the staff at all the schools I got to go to and visit and help and work with. I learned a lot more coming out of there. I think when I originally got the award, I sat back and, yeah, I really kind of kept talking about somebody else and nobody, me that they were talking about. I still didn't talk about myself. But when I actually got a chance to sit down and think about it, I thought to myself, that award isn't just what I did. That should be a team award. That's the team that I work with every day at Wheaton Police Department and Wheaton Warrenville South that has shown and all the schools I work with on the south side of town. They are the reason why that award came to Wheaton, is what I see. It's for that whole team contribution. To them, they put a lot of that honor, but what it really should say is District 200, Wheaton Police Department, Warrenville Police Department, all these people that put their time and effort into what they're describing as a part of. So I thank everybody from District 200 for what they've done. I know my kind of numbers at the school, but I'm taking something away that I'm going to be able to share with that community and share with my coworkers. Hey, look, this is what we need to start looking at. This is what I want in school, in high school. I'm saying that. I truly appreciate it. And so, like I said, it should be a team award. But thank you very much for this. Thank you very much for having me work. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
As he's shaking hands this evening, I just wanted to also offer, from the superintendent's perspective, I had the opportunity to work with Officer Hassan, too, on a community service project with the city of Wheaton. A couple of years ago, we did a bullying series through the Wheaton Public Access Channel. And I know Officer Hassan was directly involved in that. I, myself, also was videotaped along with other staff members. And it just fits exactly with the profile that you just heard about. So we are very fortunate to have you. And congratulations, an award well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, there are no, um, don't they sign up for public comments? So I want to see the attendance report.
Thank you, Mrs. Tihar. Good evening, board members, community members. I want to begin this evening a superintendent's report with a very important update on one of the primary goals of Board of Education this year, which is the community engagement process at our last board meeting that the board voted to move forward on. And since that time, staff and a couple of board members and a lot of community members have been working nonstop to get our program off the ground. And this evening, and one of the most important initial steps in this process was to identify our community chairs. We have identified those two chairs. And the first one is Scott Brown, who could not be here this evening because he is at Longfellow this evening at his son's holiday concert. So he could not be here, but he certainly would have joined in this evening. At this time, I would like to introduce Liz Corey, who is our other co-chair. And Liz is going to give a brief summary, an update to where we are today and what we've been doing over the last couple of weeks. So welcome, Liz, and thank you very much for volunteering your time to be one of our co-chairs to lead our Engage 200 process. Thank you, Liz.
Thanks to the school board members and members of the audience. I'm Liz Corey. And I'm very happy to be standing on this side of the podium for a change. It's very good being a part of you. And I am honored, and Scott is as well, speaking for Scott, to serve in the Engage 200 as co-chairs. We're excited about the process. We've had several meetings. When the board appeared, even I read out the speech about two months ago,[1490.24]
Thank you.
I think it's so important to the decision-making process, to take the time to listen, and I think that the Engage 200 process is especially important because we're inviting the entire community, not just the people who we touch every day, the students in the schools, you know, not just the small 25 percent of the population, but the entire population. Oh, I'll try and talk to the children. So, we're talking about, I think, members from the community, from the population, from the children, are out of the school themselves, and people who are maybe grandchildren from the school. So, I really think that this is going to be an incredible facility to help you all plan for the future. Let me explain a little bit about how this is all going to happen. First of all, we have a facilitating team, and 22 members of the board, including staff, residents, people with kids in and out of the school, represented to the entire district, and from all of our community members, from Winfield, Laurinville, West Chicago, Carroll Stream, oh, there we go, all the people who are represented in the District 200, we have members from the teachers union as well. We've had our first meeting, and another one is scheduled for next week. And I'm really impressed with the caliber and the camaraderie that the facilitating team has expressed. At the first meeting, we discussed your board charge to us, and I know there's a page of list of things that you want us to accomplish. We talked about how the process will work, and we also talked about the preliminary preparation of the first community engagement session. And we're hoping that we'll have several hundred people in the room, the first community engagement process on January 15th at Monroe Middle School at 7:00 PM. So, please consider this the first invitation, you're going to be hearing a lot more about it, you're going to be encouraged to bring in your friends and your spheres of influence to join us. And session one will include a state of the school district presented by Dr. Harris. And then, in a workshop fashion, we'll break into small groups, so we'll be sitting around the table with our community members and people who are interested in helping us out with this. And we will identify key issues and opportunities. And then, from those key issues and opportunities, the facilitating team will go back and have another meeting and lay out the subsequent community engagement sessions. So, we're anticipating having six community engagement sessions overall, and then, by sometime in the midsummer, Unicom will help us prepare a summary that we will be able to present to the board. And again, I want to reiterate that these community engagement sessions are open to all district residents, and everyone is encouraged to attend. Community and marketing efforts are underway. Each of the schools in the district are building teams that are being assembled within each school to encourage attendance and to promote attendance at the community engagement sessions. A logo has been created, I think you're probably familiar with it, you may have seen it on some of the websites and some of the correspondence that comes out. Scott Brown and I will continue to provide updates on our progress throughout this process. Again, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to participate. At the end of the process, we look forward to presenting, to providing you with meaningful feedback regarding the community priorities that come forward from this wonderful process that we've signed on to do. And for more information, visit cusd200.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz, for that update, and again, thank you and Scott for being willing to take on that responsibility of the co-chairs. And as Liz mentioned periodically, over the next several months, Scott and Liz will be at our board meetings and be providing some updates on where we're at in the process. Also, before I move on to another additional topic, I certainly want to provide the opportunity for both Mr. Pauls and Mr. Broman to comment on if you choose to, or the two board members that are working directly with the facilitating team as well. Any comments?
I'm excited that we're moving along as best we are. I know it's a tight timeframe, and thank you for everybody who's volunteered for the community. I actually wasn't able to attend the meeting on Monday, so actually, of the 12, I think of the 12 community members, I've only actually met three of them. So, it's very, I'm very excited to meet those people. It's not something that Mr. Broman or I have kind of coerced behind the scenes, so it was a good event. So, I'm looking forward to meeting a lot of people, getting everybody engaged, and very successful in the process.
I can't really add much to what Liz has already said, I did everything she has said so far, and I am so impressed by the composition of this facilitating team. I really truly believe it's representative of our district. We may not have every single interest group, but we have a non facilitating team, but we have access to every single interest group, I think, within the community. And I'm very excited about the process and what it's going to do.
Any other questions, some other board members, or move on to a different topic? I know I've also provided some additional information as well.
Well, it's not a question, but I just wanted to say thank you, actually, to the subcommittee for doing such a great job of recruiting such fine members from the community. I don't know how you managed to convince these people who are all very busy to start with, that's the reason that they're good choices for this, for this committee, and particularly Liz and Scott, thank you so much. And I couldn't think of better people to co-chair it because both of them understand that a community is more than just the institutions that run it, that there's a character and there's a flavor to each community, and I think they are well aware of the flavor of our community. So, I think it's a great choice, and thank you to Jim and Brad.
Yeah, one question. As we go along, you know, I clearly want to attend these meetings, and I think that maybe the consultants can give us some guidelines. I want to be an innocent bystander, so to speak, observe the process. I don't, if we break up, if these groups break up into small groups, I would like some guidance that how the board should be involved or not involved with that. My perception is we should not be involved in the smaller groups, but I think it'd be nice to get some guidance potentially from that as we approach these days, because I think it would be good to hear those suggestions.
Absolutely, we can certainly have Mr. Burns come and, you know, and provide, or provide information to the board about the roles and responsibilities as we go through the process. One of the primary responsibilities of board members is to listen, and I think that was shared as we were learning about this particular process. And we will have, our, you know, board members will have their opportunity once, as the committee continues to work and as we get updates as we go along. Certainly, there is going to be a significant amount of data and information that will be generated as we move along, and those periodic updates will be, you know, provided for board members. And it will be very important for board members to attend those evening sessions and do a lot of listening, and, but I will certainly get, you know, further directions, so you know, just clarify how what the role is and responsibilities. I think you'll recognize once that first session gets, happens, the expectations and how it works. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Nelson, but what I don't want to happen is that this were people to... Sorry, did it all? You want? What I don't want to happen is for people to give the answer that they think we want to do, and bias, you know, the results as, as a result. I mean, what, sheer alterment to maybe, even if it's hard for us to take, you know, being there. So, it would be good to have some advice as to, you know, how, because we can try to be flies on the wall, or, but it's pretty hard because there are a lot of people who know who we are and recognize us. So, you know, any, any tips, any behavioral suggestions would be more than welcome. So, thank you.
We will certainly be able to provide that.
And thank you for agreeing to serve, I'm sorry, thank you so much for agreeing to serve. It's all talk to the board, I see one member in the back, I don't know if there are two, so, Mrs. Zapp, so, and, oh, yeah.
Mr. Lox.
Yes, Mr. Lox, so, thank you very much. It's a, it's a big undertaking, a lot of work and a concentrated time period, but I know we'll get some good results from it, thank you so much.
The other topic that I wanted to spend a couple of minutes on and update the board and communicate on is the significant piece of legislation that was passed in Springfield last week, which I am sure everybody has had plenty of opportunity, not only to read the facts, but also lots of opinion about that particular piece of legislation. As everybody is aware, on December 3rd, the General Assembly in Springfield passed Senate Bill 1, which is the Pension Reform Act, and then, two days later, on December 5th, Governor Quinn signed that law. A couple of key points that I wanted to point out from the school district's perspective. First of all, with that piece of legislation, there is no direct immediate impact on the school district, no financial impact or no direct activity that we are going to be required to be able to do to comply right away. However, there is a significant amount of indirect impact that will have on many of our employees, approximately 1,100 of our 1,800 employees, which is our certified staff, which includes all of our teachers, as well as our certified administrative staff. That indirect impact, and there was certain topics, and I'm not going to go into huge details, but there were particular pieces that directly impact their current compensation as well as future pensions and compensation. One of them is the annual cost of living adjustment, that currently impacts retirees that have already left the profession, but also will impact any future retirees, so anybody that's a certified employee in the state of Illinois, District 200. There is a pensionable salary cap, which has not been in the past, that will have an impact on those earnings and those, in the long term, for all those employees. There is an impact on the retirement age, and that impacts our staffing, that we will not only see immediately, but we will see in the long term. It's going to impact what our profile of our staff will look like as we move forward. It will definitely impact decisions employees will make as they choose to exit the profession and possibly enter the profession. We will, we will remain to be seen whether it will have an impact on the quality of candidates and the people who choose to be employed as a certified employee in the state of Illinois. The employee contribution also is being impacted, meaning that 1% less will be deducted from their paycheck starting next school year if this legislation isn't acted. And so, that will be, you know, conceivably, an increase in take home pay from the employees because it will be a 1% less reduction. Right now, 9.4% is deducted from every employee's annual salary, and so now, the 8.4% will be the reduction in that, or the deduction, and it will be a 1% reduction. So, that will have an impact on those employees, and that is, the intent there in the legislation was to offset some of the benefit down the road. There is no cost shift, there was a lot of conversation about that, and I said that was one thing we will, under this current legislation, not have a direct impact on the school district. A few other, other options were minimal, the one piece that at board level certainly be impacted by is the collective bargaining limitation. The new law provides employers, employees are not required to bargain the impact of retirement, which in the past, it was a required item that we had to bargain at the table. And that's under the labor law in the state of Illinois. The new legislation does not require it, doesn't mean that you can't, it just means it's not required bargaining topic. The effective date of this legislation is June 1st, 2014. I do believe, as many of you are very aware, I do anticipate a lawsuit, or two, or five, or 10 being filed very soon. There has been significant talk by employee groups, every professional organization in the state of Illinois, I know, is preparing those lawsuits. They believe it is in direct conflict with the Illinois Constitution, and one particular sentence in the Illinois Constitution, there was a lot of table talk at the 1970 convention about that, so there is lots of information to look, to make that decision. My understanding is they're going to ask for that as much as possible to be, go right to the Illinois Supreme Court and avoid the lower court systems. That will remain to be seen, but that is my understanding that what the intent's going to be moving forward. We will know more on that, to my knowledge, as of today, no lawsuits have been filed or filed, but I anticipate it very soon. So, if that happens, I believe the law will be in a stay format, which means it probably will not take effect on June 1st of 2014, if it ends up in the court system. And I do believe the legislature, if the governor knew that, would they pass and then sign the legislation. So, I'll certainly keep the board updated as we move forward on that, I'm sure the media will do a fine job of that as well. And we will follow it very closely as it will impact a large majority of our employees in the school district. Any questions or comments from the board on that topic before I finish up?
I did, I did have one. You mentioned that the pensionable salary would be capped, does that, does that also follow the, the contribution an employee would make would be capped? So, in other words, if they're going to, if they're going to cap your pension, let's say at $100,000, does that mean you pay 8.2% of $100,000 and then no more?
No. Again, part of the issue, and it's going to be very interesting to see how that all plays out before.
Is there anything in there that you believe will alter the number of retirees that might want to recover in a given year in District 200?
Yes, it absolutely will have an impact. It will absolutely impact people's decisions, you know, on when they choose to retire. Because everybody plans accordingly based on the current law, and based on current collective bargaining agreements in each individual district, so it will have an impact, we're going to have to watch that very carefully. You know, if employees, for instance, are now under the law, there's a phase in that they will not be able to retire, and it's all based on age and amounts of service and that, that will have an impact on our healthcare, and we are self insured, that will have an impact on a lot of things. If we have employees, you know, that are with us longer, which is fantastic in time, but it will have a financial impact, not in the short term. It will have an impact in the long term on local school districts, and it's going to create a new norm all the way around about employee compensation, not only in the short term, but in the long term. It will have significant impact.
How about, how about in the case of, you know, as it stands, would there be any thought that when you retire under old law, you call it, in the near term, any, any impact in that potential?
The, the new law has in there a provision that it be grandfathered in current collective bargaining agreements or employment contracts that school districts have entered into. So, that's administrative contracts or collective bargaining agreements with certified staff. So, those are still in place, and they'll be grandfathered meaning until those current agreements expire, all the old terms and conditions are in place.
So, we could accordingly see more people retiring or less in the next year, I guess that's what we would think.
Yes, yes. Some of that remains, you see, there's so many moving parts, it's, it's highly an individual decision, because there's a lot of factors, it's the age of the employee, it's the amount of service time, it's, you know, range of service to the district, it's, there's a lot of factors to play into that decision. We're not quite sure what's going to happen. And so, it's, and then, you know, if the court case plays out, then we're going to have an extended period of time or before the law will take effect anyway. And so, I do believe, you know, we'll be in a stay put mode under the old rules, and so the law will, you know, be held, held up and will be taking effect. So, it's going to be very interesting to see what happens here over the next several weeks.
I, I would hope that we, we remain informed about those issues, because it, it has so much impact on our salary levels and, you know, so if we foresee, or even hear the perception that it's being, you know, there'll be more people retiring, or less people retiring because of it, it has significant impact on our financial affairs in the next short term. So, I think that'd be something that we hope we monitor and keep informed.
Very closely, very much so, especially because of the, the terms and conditions are new. Any other questions or comments? The final topic I wanted to just comment on, and I know board members are very aware of this topic, and that is the middle school esports topic that I know we've had some discussion on for several years at the board table, that my very first board meeting four years ago, that was the topic of discussion, and I remember that a reduction took place that evening and in July of 2010. And we, staff are in the process of putting together a recommendation that we will be bringing forward in January, and putting board to consider as we begin our budget process about the reinstating of some of those activities at the middle school level in girls volleyball, boys and girls basketball. I know the board is very aware that the middle school principals have been working on this, they did complete a survey of parents to get some feedback there, to help them guide their thoughts and recommendations as we move forward. We will be providing that report to the board at the January board. And so, I do know board members are receiving lots of emails and lots of community feedback and parent feedback on that topic, and I can assure you that our middle school staff are very concerned about that as well, and want to provide the best opportunities we can afford to do and provide at that level. So, we will be having, and we will be bringing that forward for the board to consider in January. It doesn't necessarily require a formal vote, however, if we will be looking, staff will be looking for direction from the board based on what the options are, so that we can build it to the budget. If the board would so choose to vote on it, we can certainly prepare an action item, however, it's not, it's not required, it just will be incorporated into the budget and/or fee structure to move those programs forward. Unless there's any other questions on that topic or any other topic, that will include the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I do, I do have a follow-up question on the esports, a couple of them. Some of the emails have referenced concern that there is not a conference for the middle schoolers, and that there's some January deadline that we're, have either missed or will miss. So, how does that play into what you're talking about here?
In working with the middle school principals and the athletic directors at the middle school level, we do, we will not be participating in a middle school conference next year. We have been a member of that conference for about 10 years. That conference is dissolving, and some of those schools that we've been associated with are going to create a new conference, a different conference with other schools. Two topics, one of them was the esports, was clearly an issue that they were concerned about, that they weren't having appropriate levels of competition. The other issue is middle school football, the other teams in the conference don't have middle school football, I know that's been somewhat of an issue. So, they, they were looking for schools that had both of those items, the esports was our issue and our ethical doubt about it, it was a concern. However, both the principals and the A.D.s are very confident that we will be able to put together a full schedule for all activities with or without a actual conference at the middle school level. My experience has been with middle school conferences, it's usually more of a philosophical alignment at that level than, than anything else, and that's what it was when we had joined that group several years ago, and it had been for a long time. It was a very successful relationship that we've had with those schools. However, you know, therefore, they were looking for some different needs moving forward and, and were, you know, going to wait, especially on this esports topic. I do believe that several of those schools will play non-conference games with us, and because we do have good relationships with those schools, so I'm highly confident that we will have, you know, a full schedule of all sports at, at both levels, A and B levels, about those three sports and activities. The middle, the A.D.s feel the same way, and they will comment on that in January with me, because I've already started conversations with other schools and even some of those to continue those relationships.
So, do we have some sort of organized communication to the parents about, about this, so that they understand what's happening in terms of the schedule for next year and, as well as the future of esports, you know, addressing the budget next year's budget? I'm getting the sense through the emails that there may be some confusion as to how, what the process is.
There will be a communication, okay? It is not happening at this time. We're going to wait to see where our programming actually sits, don't want to get in front of the budget and the board, actually, you know, board's thoughts on that before we move forward. We're not looking to limit anything, by no means, it's certainly going to be an addition to, if anything else. But we will, they're more than prepared to communicate that to parents, but we want to make sure we have that conversation at this table before we move forward with that.
One question, is it fair to say that the only reason we don't have esports at this time is, is an economic? There's no other considerations that were gone when this was eliminated? And if so, I assume we will be dealing with an economic presentation?
Yes, yes, it is economics to revenue issue, and it's, and it's a long term, it's an annual, you know, cost. And so, it's something that was, you know, cut several years ago, and it has not been reinstated. So, it has been economic, no doubt about it, it was not a philosophical or issue at that time.
Well, I guess I have to take a little bit of issue to that, I mean, it was economic was, was the, was the catalyst for it, but I think there was always some concern about the level of... Well, I guess I have to take a little bit of issue to that. I mean, it was economic was, was the, was the catalyst for it, but I think there was always some concern about the level of competition at middle school and whether or not that's appropriate and how you incorporate opportunities for everybody while at the same time allowing kids who actually have, you know, perhaps more innate ability in that area to hone their skills as well. So yeah, we took the action as part of the budget reduction, but there was certainly a lot of sentiment at that time from administration prior to you as well as middle school principals that they may have been, let's say conflicted over whether or not a middle school program should include a highly competitive level of things.
In light of that, I would like to see that comment and I'm in the presentations.
It will be, and I know that'll be part of it. That concludes superintendent's work.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Consent agenda items are next. We have a number of items on the consent agenda. First is acceptance of a gift to Long Island School. The second is acceptance of a gift to Washington School. Approval to post-revised policy 5.90, reporting suspected child abuse and neglect for public review and comment. Approval to post-revised policy 6.250, community resource persons and volunteers for community review and comment. Approval to post-revised policy 3.60, administrative responsibility of the building principal. Approval to post-revised policy 5.50, drug in free workplace, drug-free workplace, I think that should be, to the federal prohibition. Approval of the 2014-15 school calendar. Approval of statement of completion form for the Wheat North High School bleachers. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes November 13th, 2014, November 13th, 2013, open and closed. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to July 2012. Approval of personnel reports to include employment resignation, retirement at leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified and non-municipal. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Are there any items board members wish to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, then is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I saw one.
Will that Mr. Roman?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Swanson? Is there any discussion?
One item I would like to talk about, and also what I heard earlier is the number of gifts we get from the P T As and so on and that. You know, those are a tremendous addition to the curriculum of the schools. What I heard tonight about the Kindles and so on, you know, it's so important. But, you know, I can't overexpose again where we need to go in the future of funding those or, you know, at the district level or, you know, I, I think it's, you know, we just have to be, you know, putting that on our target again. So, you know, again, it's so helpful that we're getting to that, that level of support that we need to expand upon that.
Have any other comments on the consent agenda?
Just one other comment since we're in thank you mode right now. I see Wheat North High School bleachers down there. Project is complete thanks to our parents, but Wheat North was fantastic. So we've said it many times, but they should be applauded for their major investment in that facility.
This Friday night, a grand opening event that I leave, host of a sort of a, and so on.
All board members are invited. There will be a brief recognition there between games prior to the varsity game. So Board of Jod would be there that night and please join me on the floor. Prior to that, approximately seven o'clock, cause the varsity games get to start at seven thirty, but, you know, software games sometimes ends, you know, they get right into it, so they don't wait.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Sander, we call the board please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbiati?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Post approved, we now have some written reports. Oh, sorry. We have some written reports, the monthly financial report and the Freedom of Information Act report. Any questions on any of the written reports? Okay, we're now to board reports. Are there any committee reports? We heard a lot about community engagement tonight. Do you have anything to add? And we're learning the teaching committee met today, so I do have quite a bit of information to share with you. And this is all Chris, Dr. Harris, please jump in. Let's start going straight. First of all, we're in the throes of kind of core language arts and there's lots of wonderful, wonderful things happening. The focus of writing, there's five areas of focus, one which is focus. The focus of your writing, organization, support, style and using correct grammar and convention. So those are the main points that will be covered in writing and, and obviously they will all spiral up in terms of complexity as you move through the grades. So yeah, there's going on, there's a lot, a lot happening for the rollout coming soon. Okay. Now, I don't remember, also there will be a, as part of the development rollout, there will be a phonics subcommittee started, which I think is very interesting. And they will be teaching phonics again, getting back to the act. And there's gonna be a grammar committee. So I think these are for, especially for English language learners as well. I'm sorry, English language artists, a grammar committee. So that, I think is good. You know, and we heard a lot about, about writing and we talked about writing with voice at the convention. I don't know if you remember Tony Wagner's talk, he said, kids aren't really learning to write with voice. And part of these writing parameters, rubrics, is to ensure that students write with voice so they can write with passion and really tell their story as they need to. Trying to remember, I didn't get a chance to really organize my notes cause we met today for over two hours and, oh. So in conjunction with that, we're, we're moving towards a standard-based report. Because we've done that with math. The, the parents seem to like it, the teachers seem to like it. Everything is done on a trimester level and the parents and teachers seem to really like that as well. So the committee made, the, the committee that Faith is working with, with language arts, trying to know, well, okay, if we're gonna go to standard-based for math and language arts, does it make sense to go standards-based all the way through so that we don't have a change every year? Or we might change the standards as the new standards become available, but if we go toward reporting it in the same way across all subject areas, that seemed to make the most sense. So the staff is working with the P T As, with the parents, the building principals to make sure that that is well-understood and rolled out in a, in a very organized fashion so that there are no surprises. So I think that pretty much. Oh, yeah, and then in addition, which this is finale, absolutely finale, there's, there's a new E L L report card they implemented. This is a draft that, that will dovetail in very nicely with the standards-based report card for English, for language arts. So this is another wonderful change. So the, so the people, and then there'll be the opportunity to have this translated for parents to understand so that they can see where their student is progressing from a standards-based perspective, both in their, their understanding of the English language in addition to their course of development. So it's, it's a, it's a step in the right direction and, and just to see all that come together is incredible. Anyway, so that is one topic. Another topic we talked about is, is the virtual learning environment. And what I wanted to do tonight is to kind of give you a feeling of, of what is going on here without giving you a whole lot of detail because there are five districts doing this and the board presentations need to go on. So we don't want any detail out there that maybe one district can come back and say, well gee, I didn't know this yet. So I'm purposely being general, but I also wanna let you know of a fairly tight timeframe. Most districts, the target for this implementation will be for all five districts to vote on this plan the second meeting in January. So what I need to have your, your feeling on is if you could consider this, we either consider this the first step of our three-step process or we somehow get away from the three-step process for this particular issue. Basically, the plan is 10 classes to be offered this coming year at the high school level. And the classes will have a wide range, some will be enrichment, some will be remediation, and it will be strictly online learning. Blended learning will probably is planned for, for the fall of next year. So this will be online. Am I correct with all of this here? I knew it was future. There will be a cost to this, an investment for this year and then probably an ongoing cost. But it shouldn't be, it depends on what considers significant, it shouldn't be significant. Since this has been going on, other districts, and by the way, there's a fighter plan being put together as well for all of this so that, and that will be shared, they can give us a detailed presentation of the next meeting. There's a supervisory component to this, there's professional development for teachers participating because they teach in a different way. So you'll see all of that, all the details of that coming, coming in January. Also, there are other districts who have expressed interest in joining this consortium. So the people who are working at this are trying to figure out ways they can, the other districts can buy it so that the initial investment can be recovered in some way and shared in a very fair way between all the districts who are gathered. So, you know, then I doubt we'll look at middle school and elementary school and like I said, blended learning for the, for this effort. So it sounds like there's a lot of work that's happening with that. Do you have any, any questions about that? Do you think we can go ahead and plan to take a vote? You know, we can, we can have the presentation and discussion.
Yeah, let me comment briefly about that. At the January board meeting, Faith will have a detailed presentation that we're working collaboratively with the other districts on that will lay out significant details, not only about the short term but also the long-term planning and the commitment to what the process looks like as we're moving forward to this online environment. And well, plenty of opportunity to, for board to weigh in at that time. We are moving quickly, so therefore we are, would hopefully be able to implement classes coming up in, in the fall. We wanna be able to get them in the high school course books and wanna be able to promote and allow kids and parents to make choices about whether or not they wanna take these classes online or in a more traditional environment in our classrooms. So that's why there is a timeline. And what we'll hope to do then is to, in our second meeting in January, then we would hope to bring back an action item based on the board comment and feedback based on that presentation for the board to consider action at that time. So, and that's what the other districts are considering as well. A lot of this, the presentation of the detail is in process. Faith and staff have been spending a significant amount of time working with colleagues in the other districts to move this forward as quickly as we can so we can do some rollout this coming fall. Anything else, Faith, from your perspective on this?
No, just be patient, details are coming. I have the draft here and it's already been 20 typed pages. So a lot of details coming your way, but really spells out what specifically we're working for in the short term and also in the long term. Just we're wanting to all move together and inform our boards at the same time. So we're holding off until January when everybody else is ready to go and we have exact details cause there's still a few things we're discussing.
Yeah, Barbara, you mentioned in your presentation, the new E L L report coming up. That reminded me, I attended a week ago last night, Wheat North, a presentation by our E L L group, Carrie's and her colleagues there, a presentation to about 100 parents of E L L students. You know, I felt like I was at the United Nations. I was really impressed. The languages that were being spoken and interpreted there were Farsi, Arab, Spanish, French, Korean and Napaud, Vietnamese. And it just astounded me, there are other cultures represented, comfortable English so that they didn't have to have an interpreter there. But what our staff has to go through and the work they have to put in to meet the needs of the children and the families from these countries, I was aware of, but until you see it firsthand, and I'm sure many of you have already, it was my firsthand experience, it was just tremendous. I was very impressed and so I applaud the district and the board that's been doing it very hard for, and it's hard on them.
Thank you, Mr. Roman.
A question on the virtual learning. Just again, you know, to give both myself and community a little better understanding. We're talking about a consortium of multiple schools. In high school, it sounds like is the first startup here. We'll join together to share the costs of virtual learning. Virtual learning being a online, computer-based learning system, testing, et cetera. And it will be in lieu of classroom or supplemental to classroom. In other words, let's say that the typical year you take four classes. Would this be what you, if you were in a virtual learning brand, would all four classes? Would one class out of three? I mean, what's the concept of virtual learning, I guess?
Both. It would be either way. I could take it in lieu of, for instance, issues with pickings in the U S history, required class at high school level. We have a U S history offering, they could take it in addition to or in lieu of. Some students may wanna take that online so they could take another elective at our high schools. That is one scenario. Some kids may want to take it in the summertime. Some kids may wanna take, you know, in a core class like that. We may also be able to offer an additional A P class, for instance, that we currently don't have in our course catalog, so that would be more of an enrichment. So it really will be both. It, it depends on the student. The students are gonna have a lot of option here to whether they felt like if they can handle an additional class, they'll have that opportunity to do that. And that's what the advantages of here. Anything else on that, Faith? I know you've had more conversations with the other districts on that.
No, you just might, we, for our students that don't have computer access at home, there also will be a period during the day that there's supervision and have access to computers. So for those students that want to use up a period of their day but still want to participate in this, they can do that. But they also can take more than what are number of periods of the day at the high school by taking these classes at home or over the summer or on their own pace. So I think your answer is exactly right, Dr. Harris. It's both, but it depends on the student and their needs and also their access to computers.
I think one of the things I've heard about this in the past, I think it was a C O D presentation, that there's been a lot of discussion about students starting the programs like that, but the dropout, if you wanna call it that, is much higher on virtual learning than, than classroom learning. And I, I hope that we're giving that consideration in the process, particularly if it's core classroom, which could prevent a student from moving on to the next grade level because they, they drop out of a virtual program that's necessary, such as your American history example.
At a college level, it's much different than it will be at the high school. The high school level will be a lot more. The high school level will be a lot more direct teacher supervision than it would be in any traditional classroom. Much different expectations, much different follow-up. College level, you know, C O D, my own kids are in college, taking online courses all day, done it every semester they've been there. It's more of an individual response, nobody's following you to see if you're getting your credits. So it's a much different situation. It'll be monitored very, very closely. Have reported, report cards reported, very, very similar to traditional.
In fact, there was a major drawback to the submission we received last spring about the virtual charter school because they had tremendous dropout rate. And they kept the money that they got from the district. So I'm sure that would be a high priority among this consortium of five districts and as well five of us who are the subject of that submission plus 13 others.
This recommendation, presentation that we're going to see, since there are several districts working collectively on this, is it, the template going to be the same that's presented to each board? Okay, I'm just curious.
Identical. We're going to have the identical presentation at all four, or all five board tables. So the four others and us. So that's part of the collaborative work that's going on to make sure that there's no differences.
And so then the second meeting in January, we're going to be voting on authorizing funds or in general, what will that vote be?
Yes, it will be a cost factor. There will be a budget, you know, expectation there to, there's some startup costs and there are, and each district is going to share this, and we're going to go through all that detail the first meeting in January. Okay. Just one comment at the school conference last month, I had about four or five conversations with other school districts and association leaders about this. We are, our consortium are definitely leaders. I've always been watching this to see how this works, so it's difficult to be able to place a trail, so it's exciting.
Then we get to the third topic, reading new geometry textbooks for kind of core. And I'm starting this out, this is kind of a background. So we have an opportunity here to do something a little bit different. Our geometry textbooks are 20 years old. Yeah, 20 years old. So they're, you know, pretty sketchy. And new textbooks would cost us about $100,000, $100 each per book. So the place department in collaboration with the technology department are proposing getting outrun textbooks instead of investing in paper. So what they're planning on doing is to make an investment in purchasing devices such as maybe a Surface, Chromebook, Asus pad, some sort of a pad device, and using that to teach geometry, having a textbook out of that and using that to teach geometry. So this would be kind of our foray into the one-on-one device environment that we're heading toward. What's interesting about what we're doing versus some other districts that you may have read about in the P R, is we're choosing the device once we decided what we want to do with it versus choosing the device and then figuring how to fit it into what it is we want to do. So I was very impressed with this approach. And what is really interesting is, so the curriculum will be driving the device, not the other way around. So this is, I'm just really, really pleased to hear that that's what's kind of kept me thinking, that's where I'm coming from. So there are lots of things that will need to go along with that. There will be a recommendation to make investments in obviously the hardware. There will be investments needed for staff, staff support. There will be investments to be made in professional development. Because in any situation like this, if you don't change the way you work and you just insert a device, you typically don't have any gains to show. So the teachers will need to change the way they work and the way they teach based on being able to teach with this device. So I'm very excited about this. I think it's a great foray. It's going to be a pilot program for next year. And hopefully, once we see how well the pilot works with, you know, geometry class, then we could start implementing the use of devices and teaching in this way into other classes, both in the math departments as well as into other departments. What we need to do it right is that will require investment. So I don't know if Dr. Harris or Mr. Maddison's office had anything more to add to that, but I was, I'm just very impressed with the thought and effort into this proposal.
Right, and we're talking about how we want to really get into the one, to one devices and how do we do that? And some of the approaches are to take an entire grade level and say, there you go. The amount of professional development that is needed to tackle an entire grade level across all different subjects is pretty immense. So as we, we've been putting off textbook purchases for quite some time in District 200, I kind of have this avalanche of textbooks that need to be reviewed. And we've been putting that off a little bit more because we know about pretty soon we'll be running digital textbooks. So geometry is a real need. And by narrowing the focus of just looking at the math department, that still has 1,000 students, so it's still a pretty big endeavor. Because we'll have 1,000, close to 1,000 students that'll be taking geometry in the fall. But by narrowing the number of teachers down to about 19, because we have geometry in the middle school as well through fast pace, then we can really look at and work together about what does integrated instruction with technology really look like and set that as bar first and then provide a lot of professional development so that we're not using very expensive tools to do the same thing that we've always done. But to revamp that and also use this to look at various devices so that we get an opportunity to see, well, what really works well in the hands of students. We do anticipate as we go through and work on it for geometry, to get in, they're going to have these devices that travel with them to other classes. So we're also going to want to use various devices with other subjects for teachers that are ready to do that, so we also have information before we continue to invest more money in the devices to know what exactly works. It also helps with the infrastructure in the high schools, we have to add, now that we're adding 1,000 more devices, if they're concentrated right in the math department, we can work on the infrastructure that's needed there first, other than expanding across all of those schools.
So I think what board members can expect is, is obviously a textbook adoption, coming for text adoption, I should say, a digital text adoption. Along with that, a deployment of devices and instructional professional development and costs that would go along, and investment and costs would go along with that to build a model. And as we adopt curriculum and as we move forward, not only at, and we'll start at this freshman level, 80% of the students would be at the freshman level at both of our high schools. We will have some major students involved too. So all four middle schools will be involved in this with one teacher at that level. That's what board members can expect. And we need to, we will start to work on this. This is a development with staff right now and with our department chairs at our high school level, as well as with curriculum teams. So this is kind of a preview. This is what we shared this morning committee about where we're headed with the, with this process. And as we begin to build our budget for this coming year, we would anticipate incorporating this into our budget planning, starting after the first year as we work over the next several months to do that. Hence why we wanted to provide in the morning, a teaching committee, share here this evening as a committee report, and we'll continue to update the board as we're moving forward on the details as they become more available. If there's any questions, please, we may know some answers, we may not, we're still in the process.
Yeah, during the Illinois Association of School Board Convention, last breakout session, Joanna and I attended, although sponsored by Apple, comprised three assistant superintendent ones, one from the chair, one from the town school district, and one from another elementary school district in that area. And high school districts, while the same sizes are, this is the template they have. And we all are very happy with the way it's been going. The chair is going to be on to, digital devices is coming here for all students for the first time in central metropolitan schools. But it was a pilot rollout first, seeing what works best, and expanding it. So I'm pleased with the state of the problem and what's, their successful rollout for these other districts as well.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm very, very happy to hear that we're talking about exactly what you said, what we want to teach first and then what follows, because it's very easy to just want to throw devices in there and think that you've made some advance, but it may not be. And interestingly enough, our I A S B division dinner meeting in February is actually going to be on one-on-one. But there are two schools thought of this. And one is that we provide the devices, but the other one is bring your own. And the school district submits those who can't bring their own. And I would hope, if you're giving us a recommendation, that we hear something about the pros and cons that are going through your mind on both of those things. I know in my home, and I'm all about, this is the way the future is going. So we have to get on board, we have to do this. But I know in my own household, I mean, we've evolved over the last three years in terms of number of personal devices, and there's things, I've seen commercials, I'm trying thinking, gosh, I wish I would have gotten that instead. So I guess I'm, you know, hesitant to just jump all in on one device and say, because this works for geometry, now everything for the next five years is going to be built around that. So I guess that's what I want to hear, is how can we avoid obsolescence, quick obsolescence that happens in technology, but still keep our kids up to date?
You will. And certainly lesson learned in a lot of places that we're front runners here. And I think as the board knows, I personally have attended a lot of workshops over the last six to eight months on these very, very topics. And one of the key aspects is to let the curriculum and instruction drive the tools and make sure you incorporate it. Find the right tools and look at lots of different devices or different instructional tools. And don't just hang your hat on one. And so certainly that's, I've heard that repeatedly all over the country as well as locally. That is very, very important as we move forward.
I think that when we talk about technology and driving it, it's a mandatory cost, obviously. There are other districts out there doing it, and I think that, you know, we can learn from what they've done, both pro and con. But, you know, I also have to think we have to get away from the mentality that we make an initial investment and then we're done, or we have this, because that's not how technology works. You know, it's an ongoing annual cost. It's built into budgets, it's compensationism, and so on. So, you know, I think again, you know, we have to be selective, we have to bring it in, but as technology changes, the iPhone was embedded six years ago, I was editing that. So I mean, you know, basically, these are just the annualized costs, you know, and if we think of it any other way, you know, it's a mistake. And, you know, and I think again, there are a lot of opportunities, and this cannot happen soon enough. You know, I think, you know, I don't know if we're on the front edge, I think Brad mentioned that we're on the front edge of the virtual learning process, and there are people going to watch us. There's people out there now that have, or are ahead of us on this technology issue, and we have to learn from them as well. So, you know, and I think, yeah, this is such an important aspect of our educational system and we're going in the future, that we just, you know, it can't be anything other than moving forward.
Yeah, I think, I love it. My perspective is we can't fall in trap that technology is going to make kids learn better. I think the benefit is to enable kids to learn differently and more relevant to each individual student. So, you know, I've seen it happen in other communities where people question, are you going to invest all this money, are kids going to learn better, are they going to score better on tests? I think the outcomes for students had to be measured differently before this. So I had the same question about, so we're going to pilot, you know, 10th grade geometry, and we're going to conclude that a particular device is best for that. And we've got to be careful that when we get to ninth grade history, maybe it's different, or fifth grade pre-eltro at that point. And you've got to be careful you don't get it into too many different devices. So I trust we're going to make those good decisions, but let's just remember, it's not about kids learning better, it's about kids developing, that it's going to be more important for kids.
And I didn't mean to suggest in my remarks that, you know, the device we choose for geometry will be based solely on geometry, but it will be, you know, it's just like anything else, you know, you're looking at software packages, some have features that you like, but they all have features that you don't like. So I think what we'll be looking for is the best possible fit. And it might not be the ideal for any given subject, but it should satisfy the major requirements for every subject for which it is being intended to use. So I think that's where the staff sits on that evaluation. So, and also, I don't believe we, you know, I hear what you said, Mr. Madison, that I really don't believe that we've ever looked at or are continuing to look at technology in such a way that we're making an initial investment and then stopping there. I think with this in particular, because the cost of each individual unit is fairly reasonable, we will be looking at cycling and cycling and cycling, and it's just a matter of, though at this point, we are talking about an initial investment of access points, we're talking about an initial investment of staff. Because this is going to require good support, because if we don't have good support going in, it will not fly with our teaching staff. So we need to make sure that when, that these devices are easy to be used in the classroom, that the teachers have support when things go paywire, that the teachers have support with new things that they may not realize they do, and you have professional development. So those are the major investments, as I see them not necessarily in the hardware, that's minor compared to some of the other things that we're doing to pull it off successfully.
We will, staff will be preparing, you know, proposals as we move forward. It'll be comprehensive and be lots of opportunity to dialogue on this as we move forward. So it's just a preview, which started the community. Just like facilities, just like finance, all of the above.
Are there any other committee reports that can leave mine? Okay, then other reports, we talked about going, for those of us who attended the Illinois Association School Board Conference, we talked about going around the table and sharing with the community and with each other, one takeaway from the conference. So who wants to start? Mr. Paulson?
I'll start. I'm going to talk about, it's easy to talk about one-on-one technology, I was in one of those sessions too, but I went to a session on middle school sports. I was the only one in the room. That mattered. A ball football sometime. Because I, you know, having been a kid who participated in B team sports and sports throughout my high school, a little bit of college, it's easy for me to think about sports being a competition. And while this session was put on by one of the association organizers in Northland, Illinois, the thing that really struck home, it was a good reminder, we all know about it, but we've heard about it a lot in the emails, but middle school sports is not about any necessarily, it's about kind of the whole points they had listed, physical, social growth, immaturation, motor skills, physical fitness, based for a healthy lifestyle, insulin school, pride, building a self-esteem, et cetera. It's really extensive in the classroom. So as we had that conversation in January, I think that's something that I'm going to remember, I forgot this, it's not necessarily about who loses the game, but there's other test to it, B team role especially. So that was one of my main takeaways, in terms of people talk about technology, you know. It was a good reminder for me, in addition to what we've been reading in the community for the rest.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Who would like to go next?
Mrs. Fonsen, I can go next. Actually, I have two things.
Actually, I have two things. One is, I just wanted to mention that I went to a session that Mary Lou Center led. And, you know, those of us who've been around a long time know this, but there's reminding the community that actually, Mary Lou is a co-founder, really, of the professional development track of the administrative assistants. And so there were probably, what about, maybe, yeah, almost two, almost 200 people there that really is a result of a vision that Mary Lou and Holly Jack had about, what, five years ago? Five years ago. And prior to that, there was no professional development organized in that way among their peers. And so actually, in this, I've heard Mary Lou present before on actual professional topics, and she's very articulate. She's a great representative for her profession as well as for us as a district. And this time, she was kind of letting her peers know, because of those 200, most of them were not there at the beginning, didn't even know how that happened. And so she kind of went through the history of that and did a great job, and made us proud in the process to have her there. So I just wanted to mention that. And in terms of school board related topics, I did go to key provisions of the Affordable Care Act. And boy, there's a lot of moving parts, and my main takeaway there is there's a lot of moving parts on that. But there are some things we need to be aware of. This was given actually by a human resources consulting group based in Effingham. They did a great job. I have a PowerPoint, multi-page PowerPoint, which I can email you copies of tomorrow. With the three main points I got out of this was, first of all, you have to start working now, you have to start working now to determine who are full-time employees. That may seem like a very obvious and easy thing, but it is actually not, because under the Affordable Care Act, a full-time employee is anyone who works 30 hours a week or more during a certain specified period of time. So for school districts, we have these kind of different scenarios compared to maybe the rest of industry. We have substitutes, we have, there was a lot of talk in the room about community members who are coaches seasonally. And so if it happens during that, what they call a look-back period, that your, you know, football coach, who's a community member, not a member of your staff, but you pay him a stipend, if there's a way that he actually ends up working 30 hours or more a week during that period, he then would be considered a full-time employee. And if he, if his family income was such that he went on to the exchange and qualified under poverty level and got a subsidy, he would trigger what our level in our district has to be in terms of offering affordable care to that salary level, 9.5% of that, of his household income or less, we would have to offer that. And if we didn't, we would be subject to a penalty. So their main thing that they emphasized, they felt, was timesheets. They said, you know what, this is something the rest of industry business has done for a long time, but you need to get your people thinking about timesheets, especially substitute teachers, because the other way of looking at a full-time employee, if they come in as sort of a temporary basis, is to simply credit them as an eight-hour day. So that could be different than a substitute teacher who's working six hours a day, let's say. And all of that has to be documented. And conveniently, right as of now, I don't think government's figured out how to document it, but we are assured it will be documented. And so it is actually a serious thing, and they said that was their recommendation, is get a lot of those people thinking about timesheets and onto timesheets. They talked about a Cadillac excise tax. And so Cadillac plans are defined in the law in 2018, a plan that has a value of $10,200 for single or $27,500 for family coverage. If you go above that, you're offering a Cadillac plan. And you would have to pay 40%, or we would have to pay 40% of every dollar over that plan would be a tax, we would be taxed on. And the problem, as I understand it, and I think you went to a session in a different venue on this, Mr. Madison, but as I understand it, for self-funded plans, the way the value of the plan is determined is according to the claims and such that you had in preceding years. So even though this doesn't roll out to 2018, it's something that you have to be thinking about as a self-funded organization. And correct me if I'm misstating any of this, but this is what I got from it. And the last thing, we'll have to talk about the highly compensated nondiscriminatory plan. And that is your top 25% earners or your top 5K individuals in the organization. If their plan is different than the rest of the employees, you can trigger a fine that is, I believe it's a hundred dollars a day times all of the effective employees until you get that straightened out. So the problem with that is that they have not yet determined whether by a difference in plan, a discriminatory difference in plan, they need benefit or they need premium. So in other words, you could have, clearly, you could have different plans, and that would be clear. But if you had the same plan, and one person has, let's say, we have an employee group that we split 80/20 with, and we have another employee group that we split 50/50 with, potentially, depending on how it rolls out, they could say, well, that's a discriminatory situation. Now, it's something that hasn't been determined yet by law, because that is still in the future, and it's well on your priority list right now, they've got so many other things to work out, but just something to be aware of. So basically, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of potential to trigger fines, and you just have to be aware of it. But the main thing is trying to determine who are our full-time employees. I think it's just difficult around there.
There you go. Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Yeah, I'm gonna take a little bit different tack. I'm going to kind of focus my experience at the conference as it goes. The Illinois State Association of School Boards is probably the largest lobbyist for school boards down in Springfield. And the association comprises virtually all the school districts in Illinois, of which there are 874, many of which are school districts that have only several hundred students or a couple of buildings. And yet, at the delegate meeting, each school district has one vote. So our goal was 13,000 students and 1,800 staff, is equal of a small district downstate. And as you know, the delegates address and vote upon resolutions that should be promoted by our lobbyists and by the association on Springfield, virtually all of which we agreed with except for a couple. And one of which we didn't agree with and we objected to, we were joined in that objection at the delegate conference by District 203 and 204, two other lobbyist districts as well. And when the vote was taken, because it was by district, and the resolution, was the resolution endorsed by a lot of the smaller districts from downstate, the resolution passed. But I would venture to say that the districts that voted against the resolution by far being the largest population. So what did this tell me? This tells me, I think, that it's important for us to maintain a high profile within the I A S B, to make sure that our interests as a larger school district, as a unified school, that are heard, loud and clear. Because when that resolution passed and our objections were undefeated, I asked for a counting. I did so because I wanted to make it clear for the record, or I don't know if I made a impression on the executive board, that although the resolution passed, it didn't pass with the votes of the large school districts. And so perhaps our lobbyists won't be putting that high on the priority of interest that they pushed on in Springfield. If we don't take that interest, if we don't participate, our voices aren't heard, and it may be a detriment to the detriment of the larger school districts or the college counties, or the college communities of Chicago. So it pressed upon me the need for us to remain active. I'm so glad that we have a member of the board that's here, and we've got a past president of the I A S B that's been a member of our board, and I think we need to keep an eye on what's happening with I A S B and the resolution. So that was my take away.
Mr. Madison?
Yes, I think it was enlightening. I think the program, you know, one of the reasons we're commenting today is because we incur costs for this, and you'll probably read the newspaper one of these days, because there is a cost associated with attending these programs. And I think that, you know, if we don't have a good takeaway, you know, we don't, you know, we can't justify doing this. And I think it was very enlightening, you know, there was a lot of discussion there. There was a couple of really important notes that I got out of keynote speakers, one of which just amazed me was that, you know, the classroom training we do now in high school or whatever, anywhere along the way, you know, the job does not even exist yet that we're training the students for, because of technology changes again, et cetera. What is statistically, the United States is producing 4% of its college graduates in the engineering field. China's producing 40%, I think, was the statistic that I heard in that ability. Common Core, how was that addressed? Common Core, of course, is the, I think is an attempt to create more, or to create creative thinking. And, you know, and that is such a stress as we move into these fields. I mean, I think the terminology was, I believe it was Google, you know, one of the high, you know, historically, they were hiring the best and the brightest of the big colleges, and that today, 40% of their now hires are people who didn't even have a college degree. And that's because they've gotten, you know, they focused on technology or whatever the case was, or more significantly, creativity. So if we're gonna teach anything, we have to teach our students to be creative, and you know, and I think that's part of the mission of Common Core. You know, I see it as technology as well, but, you know, I think it was very enlightening. You know, I remember when my kids were going through school, we would take the aptitude test that would help them define that they could be a shepherd or something, you know? But fortunately, it didn't turn into that career, but it angry. So I think again, so with, you know, 40% of that, and that was a little bit of Christmas. And I know we're supposed to stay away from it. Anyway, but, you know, the reality is that I think again, it was very enlightening. And then the other thing that we've talked about a couple of times is where we stand on a couple of topics. A number of us attended the community engagement presentation, and we're beginning our processes, we heard today earlier, with, you know, trying to get, you know, five, 600 people at these meetings to input back to us. I was amazed how no other district in that set in that session had any plan at all like that. Now, you know, I mean, does that mean we're going down the wrong path? But I know there's gonna be a lot of people watching. I think there's, you know, people just don't come to board meetings, they don't, you know, they really don't. You know, many of the districts are saying, you know, we pass a budget of $200 million, and nobody shows up with the budget here. So, you know, they're worried about trying to just communicate those items to the community, and we're going a very different step here. So, you know, and hopefully, our program will be successful in doing that. So, you know, but again, it was a very, very good macro view of the educational process, and I think it's something that sometimes when we get caught up in meetings, we'll probably do a little micro, and I think it's helpful to see some of those aspects of it.
Thank you. I have a lot of, um, two more. I went to a lot of different sessions, one of which Mrs. Swanson presented, and that was on the virtual learning environment, and she did an excellent job. So thank you so much for doing that and representing our district very well, we appreciate My biggest takeaway was from a general session as well, and I just have been repeating to myself and trying to remember the four Cs that really comprise 21st century skills, and they are curiosity, collaboration, communication, and commitment. And I just wanted to just repeat those in my mind so that I could remember those, and those are the key skills that our students need to have to be successful in any kind of, in a job that we don't know about today. You know, so the more that we can do to ensure that they can communicate, collaborate well, that they remain curious enough to be lifelong learners, and that they have those skills where they learn that they need to be committed to what they're doing in order to be successful. So that means challenging the classroom, challenging outside the classroom, just develop those skills of commitment. Those are the things that really kind of hit home to me and told me that we're on the right path with our initiatives in building those skills in our students. The other thing that I come away with quite often when I go to these conferences, and I don't wanna, I don't mean to be penitentiary, I'm not penitentiary, but we're really, we're really a high performing district, I have to tell you that. I sat in on the board president's roundtable on Sunday morning, and, yeah, Mrs. Swanson is, you know, agreeing with me, it's just amazing, some of the issues that come up in some of these districts that we just take for granted that they go smoothly here. We have great parental support, we have good support from our staff. There was one little district, I think they had maybe 800 students, they dealt with four different collective bargaining units. And it's just amazing that, you know, they had one for buses, one for food services, one for aides, one for teachers. So they bargained for contracts. You know, and then you have, you know, things like board members misbehaving. And I sat there and felt like, you know, a mother counselor here, you know, like, because I was sitting there, and I said, we really deal with a lot of good media issues. So I thank the staff for that, and I thank my fellow board members for that, because I think it's, we really choose a soundtrack, and we can focus on our students, our student performance. Any other, any other board reports other than the I A S B stuff? All right, well, thank you. That was a great discussion. I think we should do that every year and thank you again, Mr. Madison, for that suggestion. Okay, I'll time us for future discussion. 2013, 14, five-year financial update, the summer 2014 facility projects that will be coming. Announcements, we will have a closed session prior to January 8, 2014 board meeting. We're gonna start that at 5:30. Okay, so.
All right.
Yeah. And our next regular meeting is, follows that, at January 8, 2014, at 7:30 at Edison Middle School. Are there any public comments on agenda items? Now, you have three minutes to state your name and address, and lack connection, does that mean that we're not listening to you? And also, you know, it's my duty to control the, I have to say this as I say technically, is to control the demeanor and the decor of the meeting, so please be kind and courteous in your remarks.
Sure. First of all, happy holidays, everybody. My name is Pam Nielsen. I live at 27W 685 Perkview Avenue in Warrenville, Illinois, here to talk about the B teams. We know there's going to be a meeting and a floor report generated, thank you for the update tonight on that. I wanted to comment on all the emails that you all received, and I hope you appreciate the emails. That's a way for parents to communicate to you. Think of it as a three-community engagement, let's just let it know. But we're just a group of parents, and we're getting larger and larger as word gets out, especially after the basketball teams just became basketball teams, and I think we had 52 kids try out and 12 made it, and it was hard, but whatever. But... But, uh, we, you know, back when the beating that was cut, you talked about when they had to cut the budget. Um, I was one of the parents at that meeting that stood up and said, okay, how do we get all these programs back? Because I know sometimes status quo just goes on and kind of knew that down the road, somebody's going to have to stand up, or some group of parents are going to have to stand up and try to fight for it. Um, but I would, and the, the only thing that I don't think has been mentioned yet, because there's a lot of parents smarter than me with a lot more articulate things saying, but when this budget did get cut, it wasn't technically a middle school budget cut. It was cut across the board. A lot of programs were cut. So, I really, I don't want you to think of this as the middle school needs to find the money for this. I, they're working hard. I know all the athletic directors, and they're trying to make this work, but I kind of don't want it to fall just on their lap. I feel this is a, a whole community, and I wouldn't want one school to not get something just because they can't do it. I would want the whole district to stand by them. Uh, that was one point I wanted to make. Um, the other point, and Mr. Paulson and Mrs. Swanson commented on this, is the, the reason they were cut, and I feel like the volume of our school, our size, we almost should accommodate our kids, and it seems like all the districts around here do try to accommodate our size, something to think about. Mentioned a lot of, parents mentioned a lot of great ideas, and I don't think one parent said, my son needs to compete, or my daughter needs to compete, or my daughter or son needs to win. Not, I've never heard any kind of comment like that, and that was a great point that you made. Um, let's see. And then the last thing is, we really hope, um, we realize this takes a lot of money year to year, and, um, we really hope that, we're excited to do the results of the survey, and hope that you'll approve the budget and add it to the budget for the B teams in January. Uh, as parents, we want to help out any way we can, whether it's doing a scorecard, or we've got, came up with a ton of ideas for that. Um, we hope to have some supporters at the January meeting with, with coaches, parents, and players to talk in support of why B teams are important in middle school and sports. I don't know about you, but my high, I have a senior now, and when he went, and I'm shrug my age, when he went through middle school, he felt like that was high school. I feel like they've gone, they're getting older earlier, and I feel like we can't wait till high school to have all these great opportunities for the kids. We need to, and I wish the officer was still here to kind of help me on this, but middle school's really tough right now, and I feel like we need more outfit, outlets and activities for the kids to take care of that. So, as you can see, my notes were all jumbled because of that stuff, but I just want to thank you for, it sounds like we're all on top of it, we're all working, we're all on the same page, and, uh, we're really excited to finding a way to make this work for our students and our athletes. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Nielsen. Uh, we do have need for a closed session tonight. Closed session items for possible action are purchase or lease of real property, and replacement of individual students in special education programs, and other matters relating to individual students. Uh, there will be a need for action after closed session. So, that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to thank the Washington PTA for, uh, whatever that is, it looks like. It's like something on charity.
Yes, uh, I think we all share Mr. Madison's sentiment. Thank you. This is phenomenal.
Well, I moved to, uh, moved to, uh, your name for a closed session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Sander, will you call it over, please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Biagnani?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes, maybe you can interrupt.